Everybody ready?
Yep.
Welcome Nottingham to the Nottingham Select Board meeting for this Tuesday. Our normal meetings are still on Monday, but due to the holiday is why we are here today, because our meeting would have been yesterday, but the holiday. We will start the meeting off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and the God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Did anybody see or have any questions on the payroll of the manifest?
Just general comment that the Marston electric bill still bugs me because it does.
I asked Betsy about that. She sent me the three. So I asked her to send me three bills, the recycling center, both from there because they seem similar.
But there's two from them.
Right. But there was one that was off by like five dollars. They're using the same, almost the same amount of kilowatt hours, the recycling center in Marston, which seems strange to me.
It's not so much that I think the billing's wrong. Why are we using that much power there?
Yeah.
That's what bugs.
Like I was thinking maybe it was when the irrigation was running and the well pump was kicking, but it's like in the winter time, January, February, which I know there's a heater inside, but it seems strange. Like February, March, it was using more electricity than June, July.
I'm like, what's there that's drawing so much power?
Yeah. So I asked. I don't know if there's a way we can get an explanation.
Field trip. See what's going on.
There's not a whole lot to see. You open the shed, there's a light and there's a, I mean, and the heater's off in the summertime.
Yeah. So that's doesn't, unless there's like a.
That's the hornets that are in there using electricity. Plenty of them.
Is it a streetlight?
I don't. No, it's not. It's not a streetlight. No. No. What's that?
You talking about Washington?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. There's only a well and some irrigation which would draw something, but.
Would you like to take the initiative to look into it?
I'll, I'm gonna take a field trip when I can. I don't know. I probably won't be able to for a little bit, but I need to get over there anyway and poke around.
Well, I mean, it shouldn't be running as much as the recycling center with.
That's what I was thinking.
Exactly. That's, that's why it bothers me so much, you know, why I keep asking.
Well, there's two meters at the recycling center.
Right. But there's one of them that is running the same kilowatt hours, which I know there's one that just is for the compactor, right? And then the other one is for the general.
There's three phases, single phase over there.
Right. So I don't know which one it is, but.
It would be the single phase.
Yeah.
Just running the lights.
Yeah.
And that one, there's, the one bill was like almost identical to the other one, to the.
To Marston. Yeah.
The other thing was Dale's mileage. If we can get him to like submit more frequently than a January through August, that's like a big hit all at once.
It's gonna be same amount of money no matter how you do it though.
Right. Exactly. But it's more.
Normally it would be monthly or something.
Yeah. I mean, right. Or at least quarterly.
Yeah.
Unless he's got, unless this is, is Christmas, a Christmas account.
Got that note. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the manifest from.
Nine, three. They're all same date.
Nine, three. Yep.
I second.
Got a motion, got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Perfect. Everybody ready to call those minutes?
Yep. I, the only thing I had on the minutes was line 118, the title there said general mail and, yeah. So it was like, I don't know, the coding somehow got in there.
Yeah, it's over from some type of text file. I converted to Word.
Right. I mean, it, not that it really matters, but that's the only thing I had.
Line 127, where it says classified road. I had said class five.
Oh, yeah.
Can't talk about that here.
It's classified. That was aye.
The line was that here?
127.
127.
Should be class five.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from eight, 19 with the two changes to clean up the ampersand in line 118 and change line 127 from classified road to class five road.
I second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Steve Walt abstain.
Thank you. Non-public minutes from August 5th.
I'll make a motion that we accept the August 5th non-public minute, meeting minutes.
I second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Steve Walt abstain.
Non-public. This is the meeting before.
Oh, two weeks.
Two, I mean, two meetings ago.
Yes. Then aye.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna go for the, talk about the boards. We had a joint meeting with the, only two members of the Nottingham zoning board, which we had a planning board, zoning board, but then we did have highway, fire department, police department, and building inspector. So there was actually a lot of information that was presented that night for the last meeting. There's a lot, if you watch the meeting, there's a lot of discussion of a lot of things for the future, which we probably need another meeting down the road, but we did talk about, you know, the fire systems that are going in, you know, being cement. We talked about, conservation commission came up and started talking about steep slopes and how they could affect on future building, you know, for what they can take off from the steep slopes to make roads for impacts. So there was quite a bit of good information and then on some zoning issues and about setbacks, reducing some of the setbacks for like a generator, you know, we don't have anything that says on the side of the house. Your house is supposed to be 20 feet, but then, you know, do we make a different thing that says, you know, for items like a generator to be 10 feet or propane tank, you have to be so far away. So there's discussion on some of those changes. But again, more of just information and idea processing for what we're gonna talk about, you know, in the future, just to give the public somewhat of a heads up and then to give the, the boards a chance to go.
John, what was that meeting?
Last Wednesday. It's Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
So I didn't wait till 10 o'clock, I presume, right? I had to leave at 9:30, but I left at 9:30.
9:30, right. Yeah, went, it went till 10, yeah.
Uh, so that's basically what I have for that. Anything else for highway budget?
Based on the rest of that meeting, Skip Severance will be the CIP rep.
Okay.
I did email you, but I just figured.
No, I didn't. Okay.
You were right, yeah. I made sure we got that.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Anything else from Rec Marston?
For Rec, I met with Courtney and Bridgette a week and a half ago and just start talking about the committee, forming a rec committee, advisory committee type of situation. And she already has a write-up that she had presented to us last fall with the difference between the two, and I think some of the requirements in there. I think we should use some of those, that wording for other committees, but she's excited to me moving forward with that. I attended the annual Secretary of State election law training last Wednesday in Portsmouth. Very informative. It was really geared towards the moderators and supervisors of the checklist, but I got a lot of information, but very confident that our elections are run on the up and up, that's for sure. But a lot of great information in that. And I know Ellen will be talking about the primary next week, but the election, and I know that last year the moderator had emailed, emailed all of us the first, at the, before the first election, all of the information that's as far as our requirements, the board of selectmen, because it's technically our election and making sure that, you know, we're gonna prep on Monday and then we're there for a fun day on Tuesday. So, but.
Did anybody have any conflicts on Tuesday?
Yes. I have a work conflict that I'm trying to work through, but we just had several people leave, so I'm in a very small pool of people that can cover my position. And I have not reached out to Don yet, but that was kind of a late breaking, ruin the fall type of.
It's more important that we have three out of them. I mean, they're at all times. We'll help each other out with that. So I should be there all day, so it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
So there we go. We'll be covered for that. Perfect.
All right. Yeah, we got plenty of time, so.
One other thing I wanted to mention, sorry, was, I know, I know, we had talked about creating committees. The other committee that I didn't think of that we, I think we should consider, and somebody from the public had suggested last year, was a facilities committee for the town. So I know we had those people that were on the committee last year to kind of formed all of the recommendations that we're kind of trying to slowly potentially implement, but is, I guess, having a group of people to kind of monitor, not just that, but other things in town, issues as they arise. Sort of like the school has their facilities committee for one building of the board.
Did that, this meeting just, yeah, did they dissolve or whatever?
What?
They had met the end of their purpose, which was to review all the committees and they gave the document that identified all of the major deficiencies that were going on, and then we started to work from that.
Yeah. No, I think that would be a good idea to at least keep something.
Does the new position kind of cover that, though? Because instead of having a committee.
He's using that document as a reference tool.
Right.
But ultimately, it's up to you as the board to determine or prioritize the projects that are outlined in that, depending on budgetary constraints and.
Because the new, anything that's breaking is generally going to you, going to him, trying to get resolved. I'm just, I don't know if it would still be covered if the committee would still find something or.
Does that fall under CIP? I know CIP is a long range look at things, but.
I guess my, I think some of the things that were identified in that report, I don't, I'm not even sure if you had like somebody that's in Mr. Trant's role, where he's now implementing a lot of that plan, you know, is just still kind of keeping up with what else needs to be done and trying to, I guess, prevent.
Yeah.
Buildings from being to the point where it's gonna cost us more to fix than it would have if we would have fixed it in the beginning.
Right. But that, to your point, that should affect the CIP.
Right.
Whether or not there's somebody constantly looking at it, and if he's looking at it, then maybe he just.
I think he's kind of a, it's broke, I need to fix it now, to your, there's somebody that's like, hey, we gotta pull this up two years.
We need to pay attention ahead of time to, to know what to actually put into the CIP.
Just a thought.
It's not a bad idea. Putting into the CIP general building repairs?
Well, over $10,000 and if that's right.
Right.
So anything that's.
Well, that, that group set up. I mean, they told us everything that was wrong, from every little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lighting issues, this issues, it was.
But if you know a roof is gonna need to be replaced soon, that would go on the CIP, I would imagine.
Yes. Yeah, I would imagine it's gonna be more than $10,000.
Correct.
Would that to be the committee, I guess.
It would be feedback, I think that would go.
We were very fortunate for the people on the committee that had building experience. Yeah.
And I think some of them had mentioned they'd be interested in helping out in the future, so if that is maybe asking them to, if they'd be interested in doing something more in a recurring role or.
So you want to implement that if we do that, have it for 2025 and just finish up the year the way we're doing?
I would think so.
And to start off a fresh, full new year with them? Put that note as a tentative, future meeting or to discuss getting that reorganized for this upcoming 2025. See what people's activities, probably get a chance even to talk to people at, you know, during election time, because that's when everybody's gonna show up. We'll see a lot of faces. We can actually just start.
So the recycling center could fall under that committee, so then we don't need a separate. Because didn't I see someplace somebody's looking for a recycling committee too?
Well, we had that conversation before.
That potentially be different. That'd be just trying to overall improve the efficiency and operation, like.
But that might be a good committee to balance. I mean, there's, I mean, there's a lot of work, but that might be something else that they can focus on, so that it's not something that falls, you know, keep people active.
Because the facilities committee might like be real heavy for a month and then they might be like, okay, well, we've looked at the buildings, they're not deteriorating that fast.
Right. That's what the recycling.
I could probably do both if that's, if I sign up for recycling.
Everything.
Probably isn't that much more.
It was just something, I mean, if they're gonna be, I mean, that building, we obviously.
It's under the CIP, yeah, anyway.
Yeah.
Plenty of places to add work.
They'll just bundle all the.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there.
Let's see over these next couple of months if we can get enough people to volunteer or ask about it so that we can actually put something forward for 2025 with a group and.
And like you said, it probably, because of all the work that they did last year, if they're meeting a little bit, it shouldn't be a whole lot.
Or anything.
Right.
Right. And that's the whole idea is that if you keep doing it, it makes it less work.
Yeah.
I did talk with Steve. He said everything's pretty much under control. They're a little behind because of the two weeks spent with the library septic, but thinks, feels like they're catching up. They're intending on doing what needs to be finished on Deerfield Road this week for paving, for the upcoming paving on the 19th. And next week is dry hydrant for the fire department and then start prepping for winter. Also some roadside mowing in a few weeks. Also, we have a very strong finalization, well, not finalization, for the grant application for the water management plan. So that should be sent in for feedback tomorrow. They were just gonna make a few tweaks tonight.
Are they, are they having their meeting tonight? Are they having their meeting tonight? Or?
We actually, we met at the library Friday because the, there was two versions of the document and they kind of diverged. We met at the library Friday, brought those two back together, then reviewed it over the weekend. We met last night and got everything pretty much finalized. So.
Good.
Yep.
Anything other before we move into the town administrators' report? Welcome back from vacation.
Thank you. Obviously noted that the library leach field replacement's been conceded successfully. A huge thank you to Emmys Porta Potty for their donation of a porta potty in the interim while it was under construction. That was, that was great to have it and it also allowed some flexibility for the library to reopen. Obviously, that was still a little bit longer as well, but, and also thanks to our highway department for the job very well done. They were very thorough. They're very communicative to both town office and to the library trustees. And they did a very nice job with what they had to work with for pallets, so.
The state came by to give the final approval too, right?
It's all approved for operation now.
They can't close it. They can't.
I was just making sure, just asking in general.
It's loaned. It just needs to be hydroceded. I think the library put out bids to have it hydroceded, so they're just waiting on that. Hopefully it gets done before the rain. We can really penetrate the fresh lome before it gets packed down.
Quick question on that. The, the Veterans Memorial had to be moved.
Yes.
What do we plan on?
So it hasn't been, I don't think it's been put in its final place yet, but there was a tree that was removed in the front garden of the library and they were gonna put it there with the help of Phil Garnett. We're trying to figure out who's been maintaining both memorial garden and the benches, memorial benches that have been in place, because we wanted to make sure that as many people were in contact or notified, just to let them know, like, hey, we're not getting rid of it. We just need to be able to move it on a different location within the library to make room for potential redesign of the parking lot if they can get there and have it re-able to leach field or whatever's gonna happen.
So it's gonna stay in the library?
Yes.
Proper? Okay.
Correct. So I, like I said, I don't think, they're still working on an ADA walkway from the rear of the building and that hasn't been completed yet. So the right side of the building still has some work to be done. It'll have, I think the highway department is going to move some lome around for that, just to, you know, have everything consistent.
Okay.
The flagpole that was at the library was kind of off topic, but it was a little bit large for their space and I was looking for, it was a lot larger than the one that we had here and I was looking to have it repurposed over here, but unfortunately when they pulled it out, it broke right up base of the concrete. It's a little bit shorter. It's probably about the equivalent of what our flagpole is right there now. So that was something that didn't come to fruition. Let's see, what else happened? A decision was rendered on the hearing of Jay Vilchok versus Nottingham Board of Selectmen in the town's favor. So that affirmed Board of Selectmen's decision to terminate. The town beach is now closed for the season as well as the access trail to the beach. Just a friendly reminder to respect the landowners, not trespass in the off-season. There should also be no parking in front of the gate at any time. That's regardless of whether it's in season or off-season, so they're just reminders. We did post notice to the town website. Next Tuesday, 9:10 is the state primary election at the Nottingham School. The moderator's going to begin processing absentee ballots at 9:00 a.m. So again, it's Nottingham School from seven to seven. We are actually opening up this building so that the school staff can do some training. They're gonna utilize the gym while everybody's casting their hope. Just trying to work together, so. Excuse me. The RFP for the statistical revaluation that I gave to you in draft form at the last meeting, that's been posted with a due date of September 30th, and that's for the revaluation to be completed in 2025. I've included in your packets tonight draft RFPs for legal services and audit services. And I've just put a tentative due date of October 18th. That gives a little bit of time for exposure and it follows, the due date would be the Friday before your next meeting in October. I can always push that out or if you have any changes to that. I know you haven't had much time to argue with, but if you want, I can proceed with the posting.
Yeah. And then if we get close to the date and you haven't gotten the information you want, we could extend it out.
Yeah. I mean, the biggest thing that I wanna, it's going into the budget season. I think it's, it's best. I don't know when these contracts were last put out for proposals, so now that we have any issues with our current vendors, it is good to chop around from time to time. We still don't have our 2023 financial audit completed at this point right now, and that is a requirement for the setting of the tax rate, or at least the MS 535, which are the financial statements for the town. So I have to follow up the auditors on that and see what the status is.
I couldn't hear. What can you tell?
We're putting out RFPs for audit and legal services. Sorry, I'm a little hoarse. We had discussed a couple of meetings ago that Taylor O'Hamlin is having a 5K road, road race in support of pancreatic cancer. It's coming up on October 6th. We discussed it. I think I got the nod that I would just like the official approval to sign off on the special event license for that event. Everything's in place right now. I believe we're providing the airways, you know, shut down Flutter Street. I believe it goes from Flutter Street, loops around Dwight once or twice, and then goes out to Deerfield and then back. It's going to be a starting point at the highway garage and they'll have porta bodies on site and they're going to have a company that comes in and does the timing and the registration and all of that, so. Her name is Taylor O'Hamlin. It's, it's a, it's a support and awareness for, I think it's pancreatic cancer.
Correct.
So if we could have a motion to proceed with signing that special event license.
I'll make a motion to authorize the special event license for the 5K road race to be held on Sunday, October 6, 2024.
I second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay. Perfect.
Courtney, our rec director, has provided a memo that's included in the correspondence packet. She's looking for permission to proceed with allowing Maeve's mobile cocktail hour on site for Nottingham Park and Recreation Halloween Festival, which is scheduled for October 19th. She's detailed, this was an exception that you allowed to rent out on your own property in 2023. She would like to allow it again and is looking for your permission.
So this takes all liability away from us?
Correct. They have to be liquor licensed. They control the sale. They actually, I think what they did was they, they did a gated access last year and only people that were 21 or older could even be in there. And I don't think they can leave with the drinks.
What's your vertical?
It's the Halloween festival that the Nottingham Parks and Recreation is putting on. And then she did make some changes just based on some feedback that she got from the community last year about the location of the.
Trunkly treat.
Yeah.
Was it trunk, I mean, is it now we've changed this to the Halloween festival or was it called differently?
Well, because she wanted to make it more inclusive of not just families and, which is why they have the cocktail hour. It's not for the kids, it's for the adults, to invite people that don't have kids.
Sure. Was she still doing the spooky walk thing that they did last time?
I don't believe so.
You do or do not?
I, I think she is.
Yeah, it's in the memo.
Yeah.
I think that was in the evening. Maybe it was in the newsletter.
That's the question.
Well, we, we gotta approve it. You'll find out shortly. Yeah.
I didn't see, this one. Because last year it rained. We attended the event. The cocktail trailer was very well received and then they had all the activities in the gym. And because it rained, they couldn't do their, I think it was a hurricane that was coming through or something like that. They couldn't do the spooky walk through the woods like they've done in the past, so they did it through the admin building down through, uh, not admin building, excuse me, but through the, this building here and down through like conference room two and everything like that. Should be able to put them out back now.
I was gonna say, just having it out back is spooky enough.
But it was, it was very well received. It was, it actually worked out pretty well inside too. The, the youngest kids loved it, to everybody else. So, I mean, I'm favored again. And Sean has his, his reservations last year. I don't know where he's at now.
I was thinking the same thing right now, but. Times change and people can change, so good enough. I'm fine with it. It doesn't bother me. So, somebody wants to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the rec department's request to have Maeve's mobile cocktail hour on site for their Halloween festival on October 19th.
I'll second. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And if you want, I can hold up on the public hearing, till after the public hearing.
Yep.
Sure. Great.
So right now, we're gonna open our public hearing that we're having. This public hearing is the notice, as it reads, the notice reads, the Nottingham Select Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to RSA 31 dash 95 dash B regarding the acceptance of $163,844.32 sets of unanticipated funds for the fiscal year of '23 for assistance to the firefighters' grant. Ms. Kirby, would you like to speak about this? Ms. Kirby, would you like to speak about this?
So, we had a full-time imperdium member take the initiative, do all the grant paperwork. We were selected for, they put in for twenty-six portable radios. It will replace all of our radios that we have to date. Right now, I believe we have seven different variations of brands, sizes, models, different batteries, different everything. So it would bring us back to, uh, I guess back to, everybody back on the same page, right? New technology, one radio. The. What, what do we have to come up with?
Um.
Five percent or something?
Eight thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-two cents, which is five percent. And it has to be non-federal fund.
So looking around the full-time salary line, because we're still under staff, uh, I mean, it could come from there.
We can find the five thousand dollars.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars. Sorry. Five percent.
Apologize for that. Back number again, just so that.
Um, eight thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
Yeah. It'd be a terrible waste for the town not to come up with eight thousand dollars when you're.
Accepting large.
Right.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, the new radios, they cost. I mean, it shows this or.
Obviously it costs a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Correct. They're like fifteen thousand. There's extra stuff in here, but.
Uh, so it's happy. Thank you. Nice to see the, you know, the full-time firefighter and the other, whatever to put this together. That's great. I mean, I don't think we've seen something like this for the fire department, you know?
It's been a bit. We missed the water grant. They were pretty upset. We didn't get free water, but they'll take the radios.
Yeah.
Yep.
Think it's a trade-off we'd say. Um, it's a good deal. Does anybody in the public wanna come up and speak about us spending the money?
What would the timing be?
You have to, you have to vote to accept the funds. We have to go into the portal and accept it. And then everything comes down, all the requirements and what they have to meet obligations and requirements.
Probably for the end of the year though, I would think. It's federal, so who knows?
Right.
It's been a year, eight, eight months, I think, since the grant was written. It's been a while.
There's a, um.
When would you expect the radios if everything? Yeah, okay. If it's like in the ambulance, who knows when you're gonna get it. So why?
Faster than the ambulance.
Sorry. Yeah. Hope so.
There's a training coming. Once we accept it in the grant portal, they'll let us know when the next closest ID they're doing, Cambridge, Mass, where you can send a representative from the town to go through all the grant paperwork requirements because there's an auditing process. You have to keep the invoices on file for a certain period of time. So it goes through all of that for you. We're just not quite there yet because we need to vote to accept it first.
All right. Well, I opened it to the public. See and none?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Make a motion to approve the eight thousand dollars.
And to accept the grant.
And to accept the grant. Yep. Sorry.
And, yeah, and I'll, I'll say that.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope.
Thank you, chief.
There you go, man. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, sorry. Do I have to make a motion to?
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Did I even vote to open it?
Well, you just opened it.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's eight thousand dollars on a word letter.
I knew I saw it someplace.
Uh, we're gonna now continue back with the town administrator's report.
Okay. Uh, moving on to correspondence from received in the Board of Selectmen public content emailed since your last meeting on August nineteenth. Steve Battlemush, who was our visitor from Nottingham, England, um, he reported back that he returned safely, had a great visit, sent us a picture of him and Steve here in front of the town office. Just commented on how nice the visit was and, you know, to be able to, to view this part of the country. And I think he ventured further out west.
He did.
Before he made his return to England.
He did include that, that letter or whatever, their, their newspaper.
Yes.
Or whatever. So that was kinda cool.
Yeah. In a, in a later email, they do a community newsletter for a weekly report, all the councilmen and town departments, whatever. And it was that picture shared with Nottingham, England.
You're famous. They might invite you out there.
In their web portal.
Um, there was a.
So you have a new pen pal?
I do.
There was an email received from Don Fernald on August twentieth and it was related to the February sixth, two thousand twenty-four unsealed minutes. And I just wanna back up for a brief second. The motion that was made, I think, was based on my town administrator's report. The request that came in from Jay Vilchok Jr. to reveal, for to review and unseal, uh, the non-public session minutes were for February fifth, two thousand twenty-four. I erroneously had it in my report as two six, or February sixth, two thousand twenty-four, and that's what you made a motion for. Um, so obviously you didn't hold a meeting on February sixth, so there was no non-public minutes then. So I just want to note that into the record that the minutes that were unsealed were in fact February fifth of two thousand twenty-four. So Dawn Fernald emailed on those unsealed minutes and said that there was correspondence that was presented. I was not present at that meeting, but there was correspondence that was presented from the recreation department in support of, you know, the concerns that they raised during that meeting. They weren't included as part of the minutes record and I don't know if you want to go back through and incorporate those.
I have no problem doing that.
Yeah. As far as not at the meeting.
Yeah. Should they have been already included as part of?
Well, you said.
So that was part of the public, though. That was part of the, like, that, I thought that was part of the public that we had. No?
I'm, I'm not sure if it was a present.
Yeah, cuz it was two meetings with them.
Right.
One was public.
Yes.
Right.
So usually if you have a document that you include into the record, you state that within minutes. And I couldn't find any evidence that there was.
I didn't think there was a. Document in the non-public.
I don't recall. I mean.
Yeah.
I don't recall either.
I have to go back through and look at the public meeting.
I can pull the actual correspondence and we can review it at the next meeting. The biggest thing that I wanted to note is the incorrect date for the unsealing of the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was an email received from Jay Vilchok on eight twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, um, and it was regarding the number of dump stickers that he received with, uh, registration for multiple vehicles. A response was provided to him from the deputy town clerk, um, so there was no further follow-up. We received two letters of support from Lambree River Advisory. Um, one was in support of the replacement of the one fifty-two bridge and the second was in support of, uh, PLIA and the town Nottingham's grant application to update the watershed management plan. So those were, those were nice to receive and I think are being included in the grant application.
Yeah, I, I made sure that they had a copy of it. I, I don't know if it's actually one of the attachments or not.
Um, New Hampshire DES followed up on August twenty-eighth, uh, for a, with a letter of compliance and it was related to the letter of deficiency that they issued. And it was for a missing two thousand twenty-three solid waste annual report that was resubmitted to them. So that letter deficiency is now being corrected. So, um, that was just acknowledging that we're back in compliance. Playstil Memorial Library trustee, Jen Phillips, wrote a letter on August thirtieth, a letter of appreciation for the separate replacement of the library, um, commending the highway department and any sport of bodies and rolling septic for coming out the tank during the transition. So those very pleased receipts. We reviewed the email received from Courtney regarding the Halloween festival. Um, I had two separate ninety-one A requests that came in, eight twenty-three and eight twenty-five. Uh, the first was for a copy of the bench order for the Jay Vilchok hearing. The second one was for compilation of attorney invoices. Um, so those have both been supplied as requested. Tracy Black, our tax collector, emailed the two thousand twenty-three lean execution report that's been recorded at the registry of deeds. So these are properties that are in arrears for their two thousand twenty-three property taxes. Obviously, two years of, two additional years of lean status would make them eligible for tax deed. And so, um, these could be carryforwards that you'll, you'll see when we get to the tax dealing process because the report that she provided was only specifically for the two thousand twenty-three tax year. And then we had already talked about the second email from Steve Battlemush, which was, um, his coverage of his visit from.
Sorry. Sorry, I skipped ahead.
Okay. So I believe that's all we had for correspondence. I don't think that there was anything further that you needed to respond on.
When it comes to the, um, solid waste annual report, who, is that the?
So technically it was always under, um, the public works directors', um, responsibilities. It was, it's an annual report that's due on March first, the same time you had the, um, the landfill closure. You have to, an annual landfill closure report. You have to let them know how many times we move the landfill throughout the year. Um, so it was literally just a, um, it was a missing.
Okay.
Just for the transitions. We have it on the Q and make sure that it gets filed from here forward. It's just a matter of, um, pulling down, pulling, pulling together the tonnages for the recyclables and what gets hauled in versus hauled out.
Mm-hmm.
For all the different commodities.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Action items from last meet? Oh, Seth's saying there isn't any. Perfect. Uh, action items from last meeting. We had the florings.
I received an email from Alan. He had been intentioned to attend tonight, but he is not able to. Looks like he's got some issues going on, but I do have a summary that I can provide when you're ready to talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll leave aside the personal stuff. Um, from the last meeting, he has eight AM with Arc to go in for a floor sample tomorrow. The other company was set, but they never followed through. So we found another company, um, due to the holiday. Tomorrow is the first availability. He was able to work inside the community center more. I will be able to work inside the community center more ten days from now. We can get the new conference room demo and framing done in three days once we start. The backroom is fire alarm ready for us to finish demo and fill a new dumpster with debris. Recycling center panels finally came in from back order, so that will be finished two weeks from now once they begin working in the town. Marston Shed.
What are the recycling panels?
Yeah, the, I think he meant the, um, so he's building new ramps for both the household trash and the women's can trailers.
Yeah.
Um, so I think there, it's some type of a, like a plastic anti-skid panel. It sounds like that corrugated, not, like.
Grip.
The grippy metal stuff.
Yeah.
So I think he was just, I think he had a frame built. He was just waiting on that panel to put in the frame. Um, Marston Shed will be taken care of this week. He's going to bag all the insulation and Clarence is going to do what he needs to for his end of the pipes. And I think that's probably in terms of winterizing. Um, one of the things that has come up is the shed, any insulation, there's, um, all kinds of stinging insect nests up in there built up into the insulation. And the question is, is why do we have it insulated? Why are we heating it if we're winterizing the well? Like, we're not using it during the period of November to, I think it's March. So Clarence Bodat has been going out winterizing the system for the past two years now, after we had a freeze a couple of years ago. So, um, now we're just going to eliminate the insulation.
Well, that even concerns me more about the electric.
Right? Um, so I, I will have to follow up more on that because I wasn't aware that that was going on.
I thought we were running heat in there so that the well was available for emergency water. And that's the whole point. So why are we winterizing it?
I think it's being winterized and I think we're heating it. But I, I can't say that for certain.
Right. We shouldn't be.
You're winterizing the irrigation.
No.
Right, right.
But that's not, but that's not bodat.
Right.
But bodat doesn't do that. That's Gary Cowan does that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. So yes, the irrigation needs to be winterized, but the well itself, I would think we'd wanna keep that active.
Now that the well is certified for use.
Well, you. I don't think you could use the fountain in the winter.
Well, it's supposed to be emergency water.
Is there more access for water?
Public water supply and emergency service.
So it was shut off before the irrigation. The, there's a valve right before the irrigation system and that was shut off. But then what happened is it froze, cuz there was still water in that pipe. The pipe froze and it blew open. So you're saying that bodat winterizes it by basically removing the water from that pipe.
Yeah, I'll have to kind of look at it maybe whether or not it's, because I don't know if.
Well, if we need it in the winter, we can turn it back on.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess. It's, you know, I mean, it's not like it's, I mean, it's just.
I think the intent was like if, I've had a, a well pump just fail one day, right? Just, it's dead. You know, like, I need water right now. Like, I'm not gonna be like haytown, I need to get water or something like that. Somebody could just go get water from there. I don't know.
That was, right. That was my understanding of the intent.
There's probably plenty of other places they can get water, though.
Potentially. We spent the money to provide, we, we spent the money to provide emergency water source. So then if we spent the money to provide an emergency water source, but when we turn the emergency water source off, like it's, it was really an emergency water source?
No, it's, it's just considered a public water supply.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so that, what it, what it does is it means that the town does a required testing that there's safe drinkable water available. So we have the fountain there. The library actually has a public water supply that we, we, we found, um, that had been somewhat deficient, but we found it and we had to do the leach field replacement. So we've had to reactivate that and continue with, uh, regular testing.
I thought that was strictly for the bubbler outside so that they could drink the water.
And the irrigation that, both on the same line. Yeah.
Yeah. At least the lawn, the lawn has safe drinking water.
Yes, one up.
Um, continuing on, the library looks to be completed on the exterior. Um, he hasn't really been kept in the loop, um, knowing that Steve's been in contact with me and the library trustees. Um, he said Tim had emailed a few days ago and he's going to respond to his questions directly later. Hope this answers all the questions you might have. I will have the building inspections done by the end of this month for the CIP and Budget Committee. Danny apologizes for not being able to swing over tonight and can't answer any questions through email. If you have direct questions, not mentioned in this email. So until, I, I think just a follow-up on the gym flooring, obviously until we can do that, asbestos testing, the flooring, we can proceed forward with the flooring award.
Did he give a date?
I know he said tomorrow.
Yes.
That's gonna be.
Tomorrow, I didn't.
Okay, good.
And you know instantly, probably. Doesn't have to send that.
I wouldn't think so.
Don't know.
Have to go and have a little look at it.
My name is Ryan Marsh. I'm here from Wilder Flooring, one of the.
Oh.
Alan asked me to come this evening, thinking you'd be here to get questions in regards to my proposals, but in regards to the asbestos testing, it does have to be sent out, you know, add to a lab and then a reporter come back with the findings.
How long does that take about?
Uh, I don't know for sure. I don't know if you can facilitate that testing.
I figured you might have an idea.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
They're not back yet.
Say again.
The test one out back.
They said that.
They're being performed tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow, eight o'clock.
Be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wear your respirator, just in case.
Mr. Marsh, can I, just to ask you, cuz one of the questions I have would, and I think it pertains because you're proposing to do the job, is can you cover, if there's asbestos on the flooring, in the, in that flooring, can you cover it over or does that have to be?
They want to do a self-check. I mean, this is a tonic space. Thank you for coming in.
Of course, yeah, of course. So if we can go over the existing floor that's there, um, potentially, I mean, I'd have to reevaluate the condition of it because originally I was asked to, you know, have it removed or, you know, the expectation was it would be removed. So I just, you know, prepared my proposal based on that that was gonna be part of the procedure. Um, but as long as that's down, you know, obviously relatively well, uh, then we could, you know, it was called encapsulating, you know, the asbestos. But as long as that's down, you know, obviously relatively well, then we could, you know, what's called encapsulating, you know, the asbestos. The question is more of the adhesive that's holding down that floor contains asbestos versus the flooring itself, but they would do a test on both.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the flooring material plus the adhesive that it's glued down with.
Okay.
Would it affect the warranty of the flooring if we went over it?
I would have to look into that depending on, obviously, I, I offered a couple of different, you know, floor coverings, but, you know, typically you have to understand that, you know, I don't know the age of that floor, but we put a brand-new floor down. But now you have that floor being geared to subfloor on a floor that's, say, thirty, forty, fifty years old. So there are concerns of longevity of the new floor, if that floor decides to fail, you know, in the near future.
And then you do remove, or you have the ability to remove that type, that flooring?
Uh, if it did not contain asbestos, yes, so my original proposal, it did include that.
Yeah.
Until Alan brought up the fact that someone in town had mentioned, okay, there may be asbestos, and that's when they decided to, you know, reach out to asbestos to make the company. So we could do that, yes, as long as it comes back with the test saying that it does not contain asbestos.
How long is the project gonna last? A couple of days?
Uh, no, a little longer than that, I would say, you know, five to seven workdays, not including the removal, if I was just doing my last proposal, I would say, you know, about five to seven workdays.
It's an active gym, so we use it a lot, so I'm sure the, that's why I'm sure people would be curious in how long it might be.
Yeah, I'd commission.
Yeah.
Right, so it'll be, so it's a week, basically, to put down the new flooring, that it wouldn't, that it couldn't be used. And then whatever time it takes to potentially remove the old flooring, which depending on what it is, asbestos, I'm sure it takes longer because of all the mitigation procedures. I, if it's not asbestos, do you have a, how long does that approximately take to remove that size floor?
I would anticipate a couple of days.
Couple more days.
Yeah, until we get into it and see how easily it's being, you know, coming up.
Right, right, it's just.
Didn't it?
Yeah.
Say it all, or did they just?
Yeah, he didn't seem to think.
Because we dug the trench for the new, under, under layman's work or whatever.
I, I don't know if he actually tested it when he dug the trench.
They probably just cut right through everything and.
Yeah, I mean, the, the floor tiles don't indicate that they are, just because the size of them, I mean, typically asbestos tiles used to come in the size of eight inches by eight inches, or twelve by twelve, just like in here, so.
They're the same ones, right?
Yeah.
It is the same ones, yes, correct, so, but it does not mean that the adhesive beneath it could contain.
And then, and you're, would you recommend that we remove and then you just level off what's there and then replace, or does it make a difference as far as encapsulating?
I do recommend it, yeah, I mean, to, to go through this whole procedure, you know, like I said, you're taking a little bit of a chance to put a, you know, a new floor on top of an existing floor.
Yeah.
I mean, does, does town know when that floor was installed, what the age of it?
It's over fifty.
Over fifty years old? So, yeah, so, I mean, obviously, just like I said before, you know, you're relying on a fifty-year-old floor to be, you know, moving down, you know, a brand-new floor and there's risk of that.
Yeah.
Uh, the materials changed a little bit, so what, I think it's luxury vinyl plank, is that now, it was gonna be like a wood-looking, because it had been like, it was gonna be like a sport gym floor, but then that changed, because I think the price just like went.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so the original was a sheet good, like a six-foot-by-six-inch sheet good, a, a floor sports, you know, flooring rated for, for sports use. But it's way out of the proposed, you know, the budget, you know, the warrant article, so then it got changed to a vinyl plank flooring. So that's when I submitted a new, you know, proposal. I think Alan mentioned someone had a question in regards to, you know, any type of ratings for sports use, you know, with this type of floor. It doesn't have it, you know, I, I mean, it's not technically a sports flooring, you're not gonna be able to find one that's gonna fit into, you know.
Our budget.
That's been set aside, you know, for this project. But the one I proposed, you know, has been used in airports, I mean, it's been used locally in the state, you know, at, you know, music halls in Hampton, you know, Bernie's Bar, you know, down there, they, they've used the same floor. So, so in comparison, I mean, you're looking at type of foot traffic that these places are receiving versus that space. So we're obviously confident that it would do fine, you know, in that space if you're thinking that it can, you take foot traffic of an airport. But there's no testing done on how well a basketball would, would bounce or, or, you know.
It's more pickleball. That's the bigger.
So, so, yeah, there's no testing done in that aspect, but, you know, in regards to the, the quality of the floor, what their applications would put in, it's being put in heavier applications than the usage would be in this space.
And then, just to be clear, because it was a huge project and then it got cut down smaller, when you did this bid, just for your example, is it stopping at the double doors down there, or is it coming up to these double doors?
Yeah, and I clarified with Alan, because originally it was, I thought there was some confusion, but yeah, it's down the bottom of the ramped hallway, starting at those double doors.
Okay.
Does not include this hallway here.
But all the little side rooms and the?
Uh, includes the, the larger closet there.
Okay.
We'll hope for good news tomorrow.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, I'm also. Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Till next time. Do you know, just for like planning purposes, so let's, this is gonna go, we're at the beginning of September, we're gonna go to the middle of September, we're gonna try to have our information and award something. Is there a period of time between now, because Courtney was trying to get all the kids here for aftercare, and the end of the year, that like she wouldn't need it, that would potentially line up with trying to offer it up as a window of installment, so we minimize the actual impact?
Yeah, because it's gonna be a couple of weeks.
So, I mean, there's no school vacation for a couple of weeks unless we did it around Christmas time, but then I'd be kinda curious, how does that work for, if we had a contract, like, with the monies being allotted? Would it, would be able to do it potentially through the Christmas, New Year holiday?
Right.
Again, do you know, I, I would just at least try to find that out and.
Or would you wait to move the aftercare until the floor was done?
Right, that would make most sense, I would think.
Right, but then there's still a ton of other programs, so like, I didn't know if there was a window where they shut everything down anyway.
It's all hedged upon when we can actually make this all happen.
Yeah, people are gonna have to, whoever's using it, it, it's unfortunate if, if the after-school is there, but the warrant, no offense to the warrant article, in the expenditure to fix it is gonna be priority number one, so.
Well, we have enough additional space that even if the aftercare was here, you know, we could utilize, you know, conference room two of this one for being the community room.
And potentially outside.
Indication, so.
Yeah.
Again, talking about action items, we did talk about the committees already, about overseeing those. The tax deed inspection review, we all looked at that.
It's still gonna take a lot of research as to how we acquired them and where they are. I did get contacted by a property in Sunrise, and I've done some preliminary research, the tract that the town of Nottingham has does seem to appear on his deed. But I'm also not an abstract title expert, so I think we need to have somebody look at that and evaluate it. It's, it's a matter of, it's right there on the Northwood Nottingham line, and whether or not it's a piece of, you know, another parcel in Northwood or, but, so.
Well, there's only a couple I, I thought that really stand out that brought our attention.
But that, that was one of them.
That was one of them, obviously, he doesn't wanna open the opportunity for people to think that there's another water access point that the town was.
No, so I mean.
Until we, we are able to determine clear ownership on it, so. I did talk to him before I left for vacation and just let him know that we will do the research, and obviously, you're not looking to do anything with it until we have all of those details. It was just a matter of presenting the properties that the town is in possession of right now and help maybe determine if you're gonna be offering any for potential tax sale in the near future, before we get into another tax deed season.
Is there anything we need to put in place, or somebody we need to put onto it, or avatar, or somebody like to like drive it, though, I don't want it to be of six-month.
It is, it's going to be a matter of, it's actually going to be something that Nancy, as she's getting more adjusted in the assessing side of her roles and responsibilities. We met with CAI, who does our map maintenance, and we met with our representative the week before I left on vacation and found that our tax map updates haven't been completed since two thousand twenty-two. So we are now two years in arrears, and, and that's, that's some significant subdivisions that have taken place, not really a lot, a lot mergers, but, you know, some boundary line adjustments and just some, you know, some clerical things that just don't make sense. So now we're actively working on trying to pull that information together and get it updated, and we're gonna have to do it in pieces. Unfortunately, you know, that isn't a good reference tool for us to be able to go and say, hey, well, you know, tax map says this.
Because it's so far out of date.
Get that at the registry deed, you'd have to research there.
Right, I mean, if, if there's a survey on file, which that's the hope, because, again, the tax maps are only there for assessing purposes, they shouldn't be used for survey lines or anything or reference. They should still be somewhat accurate to the information that is recorded. So as, like I said, as these subdivisions and these plaques and everything, we recorded the registered deeds, we also need to make sure that the mapping company gets them, so they can update our maps accordingly as well.
We're paying for the service.
We are, we, I think we have about a six thousand dollar budget, three thousand of it goes towards the online hosting. Obviously, you can go on and you can do your butters list, there are links to our tax cards, so that functionality is there, we are paying for that service. But the other three thousand dollars is reserved for the map maintenance, and it's significantly un, well, I can't say it's significantly under budgeted, but I think in talking with our rep, he was estimating that we should probably closer to the five thousand dollar a year for just the map maintenance alone. Based on the amount of changes that Nottingham has seen in the past couple of years.
And that we're gonna see.
Money hasn't been spent because we're not actually using it.
Correct, yes, we only get invoice for the map updates to take place, so they, they weren't being sent in. He said the last update was for April first of two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, and so we're now farther behind, so we need to spend more money to make up for what we haven't been spending.
Yes.
Good times.
Well, I mean, not to make any excuses for it, but, you know, if there's something we had to sacrifice on, to make our budget, our default budget, doesn't make sense.
To make budget or just to not do it, or?
That'll be put into our new budget for next year, the increase in price, and then we'll, at least we're.
And potentially catch up, we're like kinda too far this year to throw a big thing at them, so try to, if we have a budget of this year, get a little bit done and then.
Make sure that we can at least give them the three thousand dollars worth of what we have budgeted for this year.
Right, we should do that.
And then.
And then try to work our way backwards for the prior two years.
Well, hopefully we can catch up quicker. Could be worse, could be worse.
Yes.
Am I forgetting anything here?
Building permit fees?
Yep.
So we earmarked that for this meeting, I'm not sure if it was, I haven't had a chance to watch the joint meeting from last week, was there any discussion on that?
Nothing discussed.
No, so I think the only recommendation that came forward from Dale was just updating the so, the solar.
Right, which we talked about, why the standalone was more than the, on the building roof.
I was questioning why, and I was questioning why some of the new versus existing, and, you know, and then the commercial stuff. I, it just, some of the stuff seems out of alignment, in my opinion, but. I don't know how or what we do to look at, you know.
I think there was hope for a discussion to take place in the joint meeting, because that's the other part of it, was the, the expiration of the building permit after a year.
Right.
And the ability to renew for only one time, and to clarify that in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that's the part that would have to be cleared, and they're gonna have to have another meeting, because it was just.
Too much information for one meeting?
And just continue that on additional.
Did they schedule another joint meeting, or?
No.
No.
They just talked about needing to do that.
It's very easy in that meeting to get sidetracked by many other issues that come up. And the meeting, just in general, has to be probably more ridgeline of focus in order to get everything that needed to be discussed done.
Mm-hmm.
Because literally some conversations went on for way longer than they needed to be, if anybody was watching or that was there, and, you know, before you knew it, you were like, wait a second, we're not even hitting the action items that were supposed to be. So, and it didn't come up, everything else going on in the discussion, I didn't even think about that. But again, that's more of our decision or what those fees are, it's not theirs, they can send a recommendation to us, but we are the ones that set the piece.
Right, right, the only piece that's theirs is the, the expiration piece, right? The zoning ordinance change.
Yeah, but any zoning ordinance change is not for us, I mean, it's, we gotta submit it to the town, the people to vote on.
I, I guess if we could get maybe some more information from, like, surrounding towns or whatever.
Okay, I, I think Dale can do some preliminary comps.
Yeah.
So we'll see if we can get that information from them and just continue the discussion.
We need this approved soon, not something delayed on it, I mean, the fees, with everything that's coming in, every time we don't get these rechanged or approved, we're missing out on the money. And we're not talking about a lot of money when we're changing on these fees, we're talking about moving some fifty bucks here from a fee or fifty bucks there.
Right, but I mean, right now, we have what we have, so.
I know, but again, I said, we're gonna make changes, let's.
And we're only talking solar.
Right, we're only talking, we only, we only have a proposal to change solar right now, and we could do that, I mean, that's. We don't, we don't have to do it all in one shot.
Well, kinda would be nice to get.
It would be, but we don't have to.
If you want to keep having going, something going on, keep talking about it.
Incremental change, Joe.
Some people like that, some don't, so.
But it is a fees change, so it would be a public hearing.
Right, right, which makes it more challenging, yes.
It's a fees change, so it would require a public hearing.
Thank you.
On a different note, do we get resolution on whichever vehicle we didn't accept the bid for?
Um, I did reach out, thank you for bringing that up, because I omitted that from my report. Um, I reached out to five different salvage yards, and I have three of them that are willing to give us six hundred dollars in salvage value for it. Where I was at last week, I didn't have the, the head of a bill of sale or anything to be able to transfer for it, so I'll get that rolling this week.
And that was for the?
That was for the twenty sixteen Explorer.
Okay.
The two thousand twelve Ford F three fifty, the gentleman came to report, I think, within a day or two, and I think he's hopped out of here right now.
So going back to the fee thing, you want to put that back on the agenda for next meeting?
Do we have a list of the proposed fees?
Yeah, did we have it at the last meeting?
It was the meeting before that, I think.
The meeting before that?
So, current fees are new construction, or so, new residence construction, is thirty cents a square foot. Residential construction renovations is forty cents a square foot. Sheds no larger than one forty-four square feet, required permit, but no fee. Commercial is seventy cents a square foot. Septic plan review is seventy-five dollars flat. Residential plumbing, electric, mechanical, LP solar fee is fifty bucks. Commercial plumbing, electrical, mechanical, LP solar is. LP solar fee is fifty bucks, commercial plumbing, electrical, mechanical, LP solar is a hundred bucks, demolition fee is fifty bucks, after-effect permit is two times permit fee, permit renewal is twenty-five bucks, recall inspection is twenty-five bucks, and swimming pools are fifty bucks. Those are our current ones.
And how many were we looking to amend?
Well, I was mostly curious about the construction costs themselves, because it seems weird to me that new residence is thirty cents a square foot, where renovation is forty cents a square foot, and then commercial is seventy cents a square foot.
So Dale said in his email, I'm comfortable with most of our fees, we are lower than most towns, but we charge for everything, not just living space, this equals out and allows us to know exactly what's being done for inspection purposes and taxes. If that helps.
No.
Yeah, no, not really.
So, what you wanna know is why is there a difference between...
What he's doing is he's taking the square footage of, you know, if you have your basement, your first and your second floor, he's taking all of those into account, where on a typical building permit, if you're charging per square foot, you're just doing your living space, which would be your first and second floor, that's finished.
And the second floor, only if it's finished, probably.
Yeah.
But we do charge a permit if you're gonna redo your whole basement.
Do you want me to dive into that more for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll pull together some comps from area towns.
Would it be helpful if Dale was here?
Yes, and I can, I can, I, I, so this was added on, uh, this was a carry forward, tentatively forward this, and I was, like I said, I was hoping that there was going to be discussion on this week, but...
Yeah, but there wasn't.
But there wasn't, so, back to the drawing board.
You know, in my discussion with the planning board from, I've been on there, it's, I, the temperature of the room when discussing fees was more, you know, we're not here to gouge anybody, you know, we're just trying to make sure that we stay adequate with everybody, because it doesn't mean we have to be the lowest, but, you know, that we're, we're still in line with everybody else, to, to make sure that we are, you know, getting the right type of money for the town that it needs, the permits, but, you know, you know, for five dollars or ten dollars, hide next time, that doesn't make a difference, you know, but as long as we're somewhat in line, it's fair to the builders, fair to the homeowners, fair to everybody if we do it that way there, so, I get out of my, I'll look more into that, and I'll have a report when we come up next week, oh, two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks.
John, is that, is that meeting in the next meeting will be a public hearing?
No, we'll, we'll go over what we're, we talked about, and then we'll set a public hearing saying, this is what we wanna change, so you'll have that meeting after that, and that's when we're actually sit, where public can come up and ask questions about what we discussed and stuff like this, about it, and whether we approve it that night for those new changes to be. I saw some train of thought. When, uh, he said it's gonna take a, uh, a while for them to send out further flooring samples, to make sure if there's asbestos or not, sorry, I was just thinking, did he mention the time, like how long that takes, like a four-day process or a week?
No, he said he didn't know.
Yeah, he said it wasn't true.
That's okay.
Because I, I was, I could ask.
I can ask the company tomorrow.
Well, I wouldn't think it's more than three or four days.
We'll hold it on, but...
Well, then...
Business days.
Right.
Middle of next week.
Okay, as we sit here in October and time flies, and I'm saying now, September, well, before you know it's...
Don't push it, don't push it.
We're talking about Halloween.
If we get an answer this week, like on Friday, do we wait a week to go and review all these, or do we...
Well, again, my question is, and Mr. Marsh answered it, was, does it make more sense to replace the existing floor and put a new floor on, or just cover up an, an, an old wound? I know it's gonna cost us more, but again, it hasn't gotten us anywhere in town with our facilities by kinda covering stuff up.
Right, it, it doesn't, and...
Not in any way. At least to understand how much that would cost, because it's not in this proposal, it sounds like he might have submitted a proposal before that about removing the tile, but we don't have that.
No.
I just would want to know, if there's no asbestos, what would it have cost, if there was asbestos, what it would cost to remove it?
If there's asbestos, it would probably be significantly cheaper to cover it.
Oh, I'm sure.
It's usually the way...
Right, but is that the right way to do it?
Right, but that's usually what happens when there's asbestos, because it's significantly less, and then when they cover it, it becomes sealed or whatever, and, um, so, it's, like you said, it's a Band-Aid, it's huge Band-Aid, but...
Because if they could, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Was it in the kitchen prior to that renovation, was that tile as well?
Probably, it was probably the same tile.
I think, I think we went over it, too, I don't think we ripped up that whole floor, pretty sure we didn't rip up that whole floor of things, I don't know, they just went over it.
Just knowing that, I mean, that, that's, the kitchen's a smaller area, not saying that, that they should have done it there, but with the issues they already have with this floor, would it make sense for them to just level it and then put new tile on it, rather, and, and if it's gonna cost, you know, eight thousand dollars to remove the flooring, because there's no asbestos, then at least we know what that's gonna cost, and should be, you know, request it from the Building Expendable Trust Fund.
That would, it would be the right thing to do, I think, to remove it, level it, and then put new tile.
Right.
That would be, yeah.
If we're spending that kinda money on a new floor...
Right way to do it, instead of doing it and then having to replace it, because all of a sudden it's delaminating, because the underneath stuff's delaminating.
Or pieces start cracking, because it's not quite...
But before we can even have a logical or feasible conversation, we need to know the laws and stats.
Right.
We need to get it tested, we need to know...
Do we have to, I mean, if, if it tests non-asbestos, and we go that route, then we're gonna have to have all renewed quotes.
No, he had already submitted a quote.
What about the other guys, too?
Okay, we're, we're...
No, I know, yeah.
Also, they were quoted with, you know, flooring removal, preparation by others.
Yeah.
I didn't look at them, I, this week, I...
Everybody's kind of expecting a blank slate.
Sorry?
They were written expecting a blank slate, that the floor would be.
But if there's no asbestos, is it something that Alan could do, remove the flooring, not them?
Yeah.
We'll find out.
Lots of questions.
To be continued.
So, I guess if we can present it with all of those answers at the next meeting, and then updated quotes, so that we can make a better...
I just want, I want this project moved along.
I hear you, I'm just not comfortable approving any of the quotes without knowing what the full scope of it would be.
Well, that's why, but my question was more is, well, but if, if we find out by next week, I mean, if we aren't have an emergency meeting to make this decision, then let's hold an extra meeting. Well, that's, that's...
Right, we'd have to post it, I know that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, because again, I just wanna see that, because, again, I mean, we delay with everything that's going on, you know, and then the time, we have to allow Courtney to say, hey, we, we can't throw onto her, hey, guess what, next week, change your whole schedule of what you're doing and throw, we need, it'd be nice to give the karate, the other people, you know, a month's notice, saying, hey, guess what, you, here's a month's time to find alternative space for what you're using, because we will be closed, or, and then, or to put notices out to people that says, hey, we're not gonna be there, we're not gonna be used, there'll be no pickleball, there'll be no basketball, or whatever, uh, just so we have a heads-up time, and it's not something that's...
See if they can use that backspace near their conference room.
That's where more I was thinking, the planning of how this is all gonna go down to, to get done, um, but to get it done is the, is the key.
First things first, get it tested, see where we're at.
Not gonna say it probably happened before, but whatever, okay, so let's get with that. Anything else?
No.
Uh, for your next meeting, Blair Heaney is going to present some information on, uh, the grant that SRPEC is applying for on our behalf, it's the HOP grant, and that will kickstart our master plan update, um, so, at that meeting, he'll be looking for a vote for the board to get it authorized, we are a member to sign the application on the town's behalf, uh, the grant's due on September 30th, and we are having meetings scheduled after the 19th until, into October, so, um, we'll have more information to share at the next meeting.
And we did talk about that with Blair at, at the last planning board meeting, sorry, not that meeting, the meeting before.
Uh, Stratford Regional is going to apply for a grant on the town's behalf, uh, it's called a HOP grant, and it has to do with the town's master plan, it's a chapter within the master plan, Housing Opportunity Planning Grants, um, so they're going to put the application in on our behalf, and if we're successful, then we can get a kickstart towards some section updates in the master plan, and if we're unsuccessful, then we're back to where we're at on the update.
And, and the conversation about the master plan is that there's a lot of items in there that we don't have to update, it's more of making sure that we update the stuff that needs to, population index, school information, stuff, um, like this, I mean, the history of the town hasn't changed in the last ten years enough to, if, there's a section in the master plan about the history of the town.
Is this a Stratford plan?
Yeah, Stratford Regional Planning, yeah, uh, same guy that's at all their planning board meetings, that goes over and reviews all the subdivision plans and everything like that for us, and...
Any other final comments, besides seeing you on the 10th? We have no, no public? Any public?
Election.
Election. It's out on my list.
Well, I'll be together again, well, most, but, uh...
Any public comment?
Public comment?
The one that's public comment, next week, next, next week, about Nottingham, the two-state plan.
Absolutely.
Pre...
Yeah, because that's coming up on the 22nd of September, right? First, yeah. Gotcha.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion is... Huh? Sheesh, boy's gonna be like, what happened? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goodnight Nottingham.